To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Donna Edmond's present, Steve LeClair.
Here.
Jeff Stephen.
Here.
Jared Jankie. Jellis Bond. We'll have them to make it either. David Mackey.
Here.
Jennifer Stow.
Here.
And we have Christina Norland.
Yep.
Tyler Cernan.
I get it.
And we have our thanks to Peter Norland for live streaming and FHS Network for us.
Are we coming in well on the audio?
I think so, but there's a delay on the stream, so I can't make your... I'll adjust it if you're not...
Okay.
Moving on, presentations and recognition. We have ten seconds.
First, I'll move that we adopt the agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, and I'll support that. We'll all give me a discussion on the agenda. Yeah, is there an all-thater?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Can you stand so that the camera can see your live stream tonight? It's right here in the... Well, I don't know, Peter, you can look at that. Could you move the camera to the on-hand and still address four?
Maybe.
Okay, thank you. Mackey, do you want to back up a little bit more?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
It hasn't started yet.
No, it hasn't.
It has?
I think it's just fine.
Okay.
Good evening to the board. I'm pleased to report tonight, construction is currently eighty percent complete. We are roughly halfway through Phase Two, which as we know is the new central office addition renovations at the main entry and also the new locker rooms. Exterior brickwork has been completed for both additions. And interior masonry partitions are currently going in. With our bad weather, they're working inside, getting all the partitions up in the locker room area. And that's about three-quarters complete. And in fact, today, they finally turned on the in-floor heat that's in that addition itself. So we'll be tempering that concrete and masonry in that area, getting it up to temp as we start finishes going into November. Contractors are currently still targeting around the holidays, Christmas to New Year's, getting those additions complete. We will be tentatively scheduling final inspections from the whole county building, mechanical, and electrical departments, along with the fire marshal for occupancy. We anticipate those being no later than the first week in January. Then, of course, with completion of Phase Two, we'll be relocating the existing central office down to the new office, and we'll be starting renovations for the early fives area. We do anticipate, however, over the holidays, doing some of the plumbing rough-in for the new second-floor bathroom suites that are going in Jesse Kentala's counselor's office. We'll be turning that into a suite of bathrooms. So we anticipate doing some of the plumbing over the holidays for that area as well. So things are coming together well. Like I said, we're about halfway through Phase Two and heading into Phase Three here with the onset of the new year. We had good news also, the new boilers for the whole school are en route. Again, we're doing four new eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand BTU lock-and-bar boilers and tying them into our brand-new heating and building management control system. So that'll tie in very nicely. We're putting in new circulating pumps, new venting, new control valves. And contractors anticipate starting that in November upon arrival of the new boilers. So we've been doing some prep work for that already, doing some plumbing manifold and valve work. Our intent is to continue to heat as we are right now with the existing primary boiler. We'll be demolishing the secondary bigger boiler and prepping for the four new ones, getting that operational, and then we'll be just simply turning over the valves to jump over to the new system and remove the old primary boiler. And that'll all take place in January. So we'll make sure the new system is fully operational, tied in with the building integration systems, and then making the transfer. So that's proceeding at pace. Belectric is also planning to continue to address LED lighting replacements throughout the school. They've already started a few fixtures down below us in the woodshop. And of course, all of the new additions as part of Phase One have already gotten their new LED lighting. So a lot of things are still happening here. Moil will be removing their construction trailer next week. We'll be starting to do topsoil and grading around the entire perimeter, getting prepped for snow. And of course, with the onset of winter, we'll be doing... The seeding and mulching probably will be in the spring. We'll just put up some controls here yet this fall. So we have a number of items. We just sat down, had a meeting this afternoon for exterior items we want to complete. The caulking, the cleanup. We have a little bit of sidewalk yet to pour. But that's coming together really well. Obviously, this onset of winter is a good reminder for everyone what we've got to complete outside. But things are proceeding very well. And we're still targeting a March completion for the construction project. Does the board have any questions for me? Great, thank you. And I should conclude. We've got contractors coming in. We have Dollar Bay linoleum coming in tomorrow. We're going to start measuring up hallways for potential contingency use for replacing floor coverings, depending on what kind of dollars we have yet for this spring. So we'll be just working on some rough budgeting with them and see what we're able to complete. Just so we have some placeholders for some of these wants with the contingency monies left. We also have replaced all of the old lock sets throughout the high school that were remaining with new lever sets. We're just working on that function right now. And we'll be doing some security upgrades to the old classroom doors, reinforcing some of the panels on them for a lockdown. So a lot of things are behind the scenes proceeding at pace there as well. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. So we're going to move on to public comment.
Um, we have the extended COVID-19 plan. I checked in first. Extended, a new one. So I have these for you two. And one of the past days, though. So I actually have a few access, so I think they're up for the people present if you'd like to pass those out. As you all know, in August, we were required to come up with a return-to-school plan. And we did come up with that comprehensive plan with the help of a return-to-school committee. You approved that in August, and we've been following that. Since then, schools have additionally been required to come up with an extended COVID-19 continuity of learning plan. And this plan includes goals for reading and math for students. And we've been advised to keep those goals as simple as possible for the year because the people at the state level don't want us to lose track of making sure students are continuing to improve despite the setbacks from last spring. And they also reinforce the safety procedures that we have put in place with our return-to-school comprehensive plan. And as well, they insist that we continue to monitor engagement of students regardless of what learning styles, what learning options that they are involved with. And so part of this new requirement of this extended COVID-19 continuity of learning plan is to every month reaffirm the instructional options and to review the weekly two-way interactions between teachers and students. So I will explain a little bit about that. What has... What the legislature has decided is that we can assume that students are adequately engaged if they are being interacted with, with an interaction from a teacher and then interaction back from that student or that family twice a week. And that's pretty much a minimum. We don't think that that's enough engagement for the learning that we need to take place here, but that's the minimum that the state is requiring. And in fact, if you're doing an option other than in-person face-to-face learning, it can be very, very hard to make those two-way interactions happen. And a lot of different things qualify as those two-way interactions. If the student is in person, then just being there in person and that eye contact and that regular daily interaction that happens, that counts. And so that's what we look for for our in-person students. If they are virtual or online students, then the teacher is signing work and the student submitting that work would count. Somebody who's responsible for the student's education emailing them and then getting an email back would count. A phone call would count. Other kinds of messaging would count. Google meets, like a Zoom meeting, those count. And so that's what the state is looking for, is a minimum of two two-way contacts per week. And this is what we and all Michigan schools will be reporting on this year. So the first thing we do in this miniature agenda within our board meeting is reconfirm how instruction is going to be delivered through the 2021 school year. The next thing is to see if anybody present has public comments on the extended learning plan, not on, not the regular comment, public comment of the board meeting, but just on this plan, which has been posted on the website since the beginning of October. And then we would review the weekly two-way interaction rates. And this is going to be a part of our meetings going forward. So first thing you will need to do is reconfirm how instruction is going to be delivered through the 2021 school year. And if you look at the section that says elementary, I will share what we have been doing so far and what... And the first three of, well, actually, all of them have been confirmed in our return-to-school plan. So in-person learning will continue as long as possible. Virtual learning in elementary currently, that's six students, will continue. However, that's likely only through the remainder of the first trimester. Online learning with currently four students involved in that will continue. And remote learning will resume if authorities close schools. And at the middle school and high school level, I'm sorry, there's a typo there. It should say middle high school, grade six to twelve. Same, in-person learning will continue as long as possible. Virtual learning with fourteen point two students will continue, likely only through the remainder of the first trimester. Online learning with eight students currently will continue, and remote learning will resume if authorities close schools. And as you know, at the last board meeting, we discussed that teachers are very overwhelmed with using two modes of instruction at the same time, both in-person and then making recordings and then monitoring student work who are not, students who are not in person. And so that has come up and is being discussed by the teachers' union. And Donna and Steve and I met with the teachers' union as they wanted to bargain over that particular mode of instruction. And we don't have a resolution to that yet. However, it's not being suggested at this time that we end that, at least it hasn't been officially, that we end that before the end of first trimester. So I feel that it's acceptable to approve this for now. And then November's meeting, if a decision has been made or if it's time to make that decision as a board to end virtual learning option two, then perhaps that would be the time to officially do that. If you would like to do it a different way, then now is your time to discuss that and decide that. But before we move on, we do have to affirm whatever it is that we are going to be doing for instructional options.
Just to confirm, virtual learning is when someone is using technology and learning from one of our staff members. Online learning is entirely a third party?
Yes.
Okay.
Almost entirely a third party. We do have teachers monitoring those classes, those courses, and connecting with the students and their families. At the elementary level, Jade Babcock is assigned to that job. And at the high school level, Jesse is the main, Jesse Kentala is the main person assigned to that. And he has been that person for many years. Although it may involve a little bit more interaction from teachers this year. We're figuring out those details if the state keeps changing up the requiring of us.
So are the teachers wanting to negotiate that third-party one too?
No, just the one that involves them recording their lessons, sending them to students, setting up their work so that it works for the students who are not in class, managing the different way that the students are submitting that homework. It's a lot of management, takes a lot of time, and it adds a lot of stress. Were you going to ask something, Jeff?
And with regard to these numbers, we have six virtual students in elementary and fourteen and a fraction in middle high school. Are enough of these... I'm assuming there might be some sibling groups in those numbers. Is it feasible to incorporate feedback from the families who would be affected by virtual learning into this decision?
Yes. Right, I've talked formally with some, and we can get official feedback by way of a survey. The issue is that if virtual learning option two is no longer offered, then those families would have to choose between in-person learning, if they were to stay in Dollar Bay, and the online platform.
How many teachers are involved?
All teachers, but four elementary teachers. Well, specials teachers are maybe, maybe they can go either way.
So pretty much all the teachers?
Most teachers are. Some teachers have quite a few virtual students on their teaching load, and some have just one. But even if it's just one, it's an incredible jump in the amount of work and time that that takes.
So we don't know what those families will do there?
We don't know what they will do.
Now, in order to reconfirm, are we making a motion and taking a vote?
I believe so.
So we'll be gathering information to make the decision on virtual for next month's meeting then?
Yes.
So we can make an educated...
So we can adjust this in thirty days as well?
Exactly. I don't think anybody intended to end that option at this... I mean, the conversations have been happening, but the most recent conversations, it doesn't sound like people are advocating to end that in the middle of this trimester. And the November board meeting is a few weeks before, or a couple of weeks before the trimester ends. If we did figure it out and in that negotiation process, it became very clear. You could also have an additional meeting if you needed to have a special meeting. I would like to let the families know as soon as we, as we're clear on that so that they can figure out what their final choice was going to be.
I can make a motion. I'm not sure we're right.
Should we... Most of the instructions are...
Most of the instructions will be delivered for each grade level. And I'll support it.
Okay, any discussion?
Do we open, is this the public comment part? Does that happen right now, or is that the survey we're talking about?
No, we'll have the public comment after the vote.
Okay.
Okay, so no more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries.
So is there any public comment today on specifically the extended learning plan?
About this one? Or are you talking about any public comment?
No, on, on just this...
Okay, well, I have a question. The bottom part, there are about two-way interaction rates. What does it actually mean?
Yes, that's the next thing on the agenda. I was just about to get to that. Any other public comment before I move on to that?
I just, I want to make sure. So it's possible that the part two virtual will not be offered in the second trimester?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so then, moving on to Mr. Schmidt's question, review weekly two-way interaction rates. Down at the bottom, you'll see September, week one, two, three, and four. Those are our four weeks of school in September. And we had extremely high interaction. I believe it's the highest in our ISB from conversations I've had with other administrators. Most of our students are in-person students, and that helps quite a bit because then they automatically meet that two-way interaction quota. Those students who were in the virtual load, as you saw their numbers up there, the teachers have been doing a really phenomenal job of connecting with them and making sure that they understand what's expected and what's going on. We had, we had a couple of exceptions with students whose families were non-responsive, and those are the students we do worry about. But it was not for lack of the teachers trying. And then the online students are within that percentage as well. And those students actually have been doing very well this year too. They're doing a fully online platform through third-party vendor monitored by Jade Babcock and Jesse Kentala. So our first week was ninety-nine percent of students. Second week, down a little bit to ninety-eight percent. Third week to ninety-eight percent again. And fourth week, which is really interesting because that was the first week of our health department closure, was back up to ninety-nine percent. I, I will say kudos to our teachers and staff for a fantastic job connecting with kids and coming up with an instructional plan for remote learning that was very effective. The teachers decided, the teachers and I decided at meetings before school and then in September that we wanted daily interaction with the students as much as possible and believed that would be the only way to keep instruction going, which is the requirement this year. It's not just required to do a little bit of something and make sure that the kids are feeling okay, which was kind of the focus in the spring. We need to continue instructional delivery that meets the content standards of the state. And so the teachers decided every day of the week in elementary and then for high school, four days with a fifth day for one-on-one contact would be the way to do it. And I believe that's why our interaction rates for even the school closure week is so high because we did have students engaging for every class period, every day in most cases. So I just, I can't celebrate our teaching staff enough for the success of that because nobody has numbers like that except for Dollar Bay. So I'm very proud of that. We will see if that continues, if we get shut down again because, you know, sometimes the novelty wears off and there are issues at home with the support that we don't have, a lot we can do about it. And I'll talk with you a little bit later about connectivity issues that's also been a hurdle. But for now, I think we've got a lot to celebrate there. Thank you. Okay, now back to the regular news. So moving on to public comment. I think it first would be a phone call. Sure. Karen Hamm contacted Danielle in the superintendent's office stating that she might like to make public comment by phone. And so we will give her a call, and she said if we would like to, she will answer. And if she does not care to, she will not answer. Hi Karen, it's Christina.
Hi.
Hi, would you like to make a public comment tonight? Okay, I'll put you on speaker. Hang on a second, I'm going to put you right on speaker. Okay, I think you're set to go, Karen.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, first off, congratulations to Terron and Cooper, Stowe, and Amos and John Powell for outstanding performances in the cross-country meet. That was fabulous to see. And I'm very proud of all of them, and I, I hope you can convey that to your, your children. The comment that I, I guess I'm, I'm going to make tonight is my concern over the retirement incentive that was offered me. First off, I thank you for thinking highly enough of me to want to do that. It means a lot to me that that's, that's how you felt. However, I, I still feel a bit hurt about the way it was done. And I, I, my comment is that I kind of wish that board members would have felt that they could come up and talk to me and maybe see how I felt about part of that incentive. The other part that I kind of wonder is, is why, why the incentive was offered and you say that it is a budgetary savings? And I kind of question that because with a $12,000 incentive that was given me and paying out my unused sick and vacation days, the total amount of that came to over $25,000. Add to that Rachel's salary and her benefits, I find it kind of suspicious or interesting, I guess, that you say that there's a high cost savings in, in doing so. My plan was to retire at the end of this year originally. And so I don't know how much money that I, I mean, I can't, I can't even begin to imagine that you would have saved that much money over one year's time. Maybe long-term, yes, but my, my plan was not to stay long-term as I had already been there for thirty-two and a half years. I guess that's my, I have my speculations as to why it was offered. And I don't really, I guess I wish I would, I would know. The other thing is, is I see on your agenda tonight that you are looking at the possibility of hiring a sub to come into the building on a daily basis. My assumption would be that that person would be getting paid. So by adding another staff person and the wages of that staff person and going back to what I said originally, I just don't see that there was a great cost savings. Anyway, with that being said, I will let you get back to your meeting. I miss the kids, I miss all of you, and I hope you're all doing well. Take care.
You too, Karen. Thank you. Thank you.
Is it our right to take the mask off?
While you're speaking, you may.
Is that the, also the awards, awards agreement?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All set? Thank you. All right. Anyway, I'm glad to hear that Karen Hamm has raised these issues. And I saw the same, same thing that she did in terms of how do you save money for a short term? And when you're hiring new people and you hire a substitute, you save nine dollars an hour for, you know, a few months this year. So the, the whole, the whole issue of cost savings is rather, seems rather prefabricated. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. The, the other thing is, I'm very happy that the board, you know, went ahead and did the live streaming versus virtual meeting and that we're able to, you know, have the ability of people to speak. But the thing is, I don't understand why it's so important to have so much control over people calling in and speaking ahead of time. It doesn't make any sense. As you, you know, as I, as I noticed, there's no compelling reason why, why you can't be more liberal rather than going to an attorney and saying you've got, you've got to, you know, do this, this, and this. I, I, I think the board... I think the board should take the lead and decide that it doesn't need to have all these protections from, from citizens in order to be able to have a meeting. So I, and I really, I don't really see how, you know, differentiating between live stream and virtual is that important. I think it's important that the citizens are able to communicate freely without obstacles, which seems to be part of the problem that has been brought up repeatedly by Uper Cares and Cindy Barth, among others. And so, so let's, let's take a look at this and say, you know, can we just have people speak, whether it's via electronic or whether coming in here? This is really, really, the, the whole idea is to present whatever ideas people have to the school. And the whole problem with, with the COVID is the law didn't really anticipate this type, type of problem coming up. So, you know, being legalistic and doing us a favor is not really the main thing. The main thing is being able to have the board communicate with the public, the ones who are paying their taxes to rent these schools, both, both locally and in their income taxes. So it's, so it's really, really important, I think, to do that. So I really appreciate the ability to speak tonight. And in case you didn't catch it, my name is Horst Schmidt. Thank you.
Of course, if you'd like to stay after a couple minutes, I can answer your questions. Do you have any other public comment?
First off, I just wanted to make sure that I said personally that I want to thank all of the teachers for the two-week shutdown. They were amazing. They paid such attention to each student and the issues that they were dealing with while trying to take care of their daily lessons. So that was a huge, huge plus in my book. Also, a big plus was the change in the minutes on this, from the school board. A lot more information was given. I still would like to see more information listed in the public comment session. There, I know there's still problems within the community of, members continuing to believe that there's some type of malfeasance going on with the board. And by not having the public comments being listed, I think that would go a long way to have some clarification on issues. It's been 28 days since the last board meeting, and I asked a myriad of questions. I have had no response to any of the questions. Some of the items have been updated and have been addressed, but I have not received one response to any of the questions. I have talked to some of you guys privately, but I still have not heard one, I know from one board member, that's Dallas Bond. He's refused to answer any of my emails, so I'd like that to be noted. So I'm also wondering, is there going to be any type of communication from any of the board members regarding the last two board meetings where specific questions that I've answered? That's it. I can't hear himself.
We've been asked in the past about the location of public comment during a board meeting.
Okay.
Our MASB lawyer has recommended we hold public comment at the start of the meeting, as we have been doing in the past few years. This gives people the ability to prepare statements and share perspectives that may be able to influence the board's decisions later in the meeting. This is the most effective time to hold public comment. Those who have questions or feedback afterward about decisions made during, decisions made during the board meeting may always contact board members with their thoughts.
Am I allowed to respond to that? I'm wondering why we're relying on lawyers wholly for guidance on there. I'm, I'm more interested in what the individual members of the board have to say in response. If we ask a question, we should be given some type of answer. And, you know, sometimes the comments should be put on the record. And if you're not including public comments on the actual agenda minutes, that could be a perceived problem.
Moving on to our consent agenda. There's a recommendation to approve the items in the consent agenda. Are there anybody's corrections to the minutes? Is ready to report meeting minutes for September? Financial statements from the previous month and checks written in the previous month? Do we have a motion for those?
And we accept the, the answer on the approval consent agenda. And I'll support it.
Do we have a discussion on them? All right, that's all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We're gonna move on now to superintendent report. And principal, Christina. Okay. Count day happened a couple of weeks ago, and our student count is very strong. Again, I'm told by our friends at the ISD that our numbers are among the strongest. A lot of schools have lost many students this year for various reasons, due to COVID and the changes in instruction and the regulations and so forth. I am pleased to say that our current count is 330 students. It's not very good for Dollar Bay. During that Health Department cooldown period, I alluded to that a little bit ago. I'll explain a little bit more about what we did for remote learning. We came up with a schedule where each of the high school classes met every day, Monday through Thursday, at just about the same time as they would meet during the regular school day. Instead of a 76-minute period, they met for a 60-minute period. And then that gave everybody a little bit of a break between classes, although it wasn't much of a break for the teachers because they were busy flipping their materials and getting things ready for the next session. Those happened via Google Meet as we got very accustomed to that platform in the spring, and that works well with our Google Chrome domain here at school. The elementary, at the high school level, work was assigned primarily through Google Classroom, which is an online platform that a lot of the teachers and students are already familiar with. And that's also what was used primarily in the spring, so that was a pretty comfortable switch for most. And at the elementary level, Fridays for the high school schedule. We kept that day separate for teachers to contact one-hour periods a day, Monday through Thursday. The elementary teachers held class every single day of the week, Monday through Friday. And those classes, Monday through Thursday, were 20 minutes each because of the shorter attention spans and also because we are working in a K-12 school and are trying to honor the lives of the families who have got students in multiple grade levels. And so we had to squeeze those classes in so that there would never be a conflict, and we managed to do it. And so Monday through Thursday, there were 20-minute lessons. And then on Friday, every class in the high school wasn't meeting, had an hour-long class. And the teachers found this really helpful because they were able to continue with their actual work that they were doing in school. Elementary teachers got to do some reading intervention work during that time, which is extremely valuable and was very much missed during the spring. When we talked to high school, middle school students about what it was like, they said it was just like school. We just kept on working, we kept on learning, we just picked up where we left off. So again, we feel really good about that. At the elementary level, we provided packets, hard copy packets for the families so that everybody could do their work that way. And we had a pickup day on Tuesday for that so that they could not need to rely on internet in order to get their work done. Although we did have a lot of instructional videos and other enhancements that the teachers wanted the students to access if they did have that internet ability and a computer. And for the most part, as you saw with those percentages of engagement, or at least that last week, which was the first week of our remote learning, it went really well. We had a lot of engagement. The issues that did come up were the same as those in the spring, and that was lack of internet for some households. And for even more households, lack of a strong enough internet signal. So they might have internet, but to have two or three students doing a Google Meet session at one time was, was pretty much impossible. And my husband's nodding because we experienced the same in our house, especially in the spring. And students also found that if they were needing to be in a Google Meet and then doing some work also on the computer on a different page and then coming back to the session, that was really difficult with internet connectivity issues. In some cases, family support was the issue, and that's also what we ran into in the spring a bit. And actually, today was a day of professional development for me and the MTSS teams of the elementary school in the morning and the high school, middle school in the afternoon. And that's one thing that we problem-solved around quite a bit, is how to reach the students whose families are not able to support them with remote learning because those are the ones who we feel the most concerned about, who in some cases just disappear if we're not meeting with them face-to-face every day. So I will talk to you a little bit more about some of that problem solving in a minute. But right now, we'll just go right on. We already reviewed the extended continuity of learning plan and those goals. And what we did come up with were a very, very simplistic goal. As I mentioned, that's what's recommended, is that 80% of our students will improve at ELA in math, K-8, between the fall and the spring. So I'm pretty confident we'll make that goal, that that's the kind of simple goals that we are being advised to set this year. And how those goals are going to be assessed is through benchmark assessments. This is another requirement of the legislature this year. You might have heard me talk in the past about DIBLs testing, and then the name changed to Acadians testing. That's the mode that we've used to test our students at reading, reading at the K through 6 level. And this year, it's the K to 5 level, now the 6th grade is in the middle school. And we are, this year, going to use that test, the Acadians English Language Arts Test for K to 5. And we are also adding the Acadians, same company, math benchmark assessment, which is something we've been interested in doing for years anyway. And so now, as we find, it's required to invest in that and get a little bit of training and then hope that we like that benchmark assessment and that it will prove useful. The K to 2 students have, for the last few years, done an online assessment called the Early Literacy and Math Benchmark Assessments. And that will continue because that also comes for these, the meeting the goals and checking against that if we've made the progress we need to. And we need to add an additional assessment at the middle school level. Previously, we have had no benchmark assessments at that level. And what we'll be doing is choosing the smarter, balanced assessment, which is structured very similarly to our M-Step. That's our standardized test in the spring, but it's more of a benchmark assessment that will happen in the fall and the spring, possibly the winter. And that is going to be for the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students in both ELA and math as well, and is administered online. Okay, I think that's it on the extended continuity of learning plan, unless you have any questions on that? I've already discussed the three modes of instruction. We talked about the extended continuity of learning plan and how the virtual Option 2 Plan is currently being discussed. Now, in more fun news, Fire Prevention Day was last week on Tuesday. So we say a big thank you to the local Dollar Bay volunteer firefighters. And they came in and again taught the students about fire safety. We did not use the smokehouse this year, which is always a really fun part of that, where kids get to practice going through a smoky house as if there was a fire. Because of COVID regulations, we had to pass on that one, but the firemen again did a wonderful job connecting with students. We have parent-teacher conferences this week, and those will take place either by phone or if the parent prefers it, by Google Meet. That'll happen the same time as it was already scheduled, Thursday evening and Friday afternoon. And we have Halloween coming up next week. Normally, we have had a big party in the afternoon across all the elementary classrooms, where kids get to go into different rooms for different Halloween activities and games and candy of all kinds and lots of fun. And then that is always followed up by a parade where the fire truck leads the group with some of the students of the month in the cab, and then the marching band, and then all the kids in their costumes down the main streets of town. So the question that we will discuss later is, is whether we should hold that Halloween parade as in the past or whether we need to reconsider that due to COVID, and so that will be up to you. In athletics this week, or currently, we have the junior high girls who ended their season last week. And thank you to Coach Moylan in for a great job coaching those girls. The volleyball season is winding down, not quite done yet, still a few weeks to go. And we thank Rachel Griffin for being the coach of that and supported by Rick Olson. And football season is also winding down with the big Copper Bowl this Friday, so that's going to be exciting. And we have Bolts Cross Country, as Karen celebrated, some of our athletes who just got, the boys, Boys Blue Bolts just achieved Team of the Year at the conference finals last week. So that was fantastic, and several of our students made second-team all-conference and first-team all-conference. We're very proud of them. And so we say congratulations and good luck to Coach Matt Zimmer and both the boys and the girls teams. They've got UP finals this Saturday. It's been a great season for the girls and the boys. All right, MTSS and PBIS, that's multi-tiered systems of supports and positive behavior interventions and supports. This is what I was meeting on with teachers today, and as I share with you every few board meetings. This is a group that meets about progress in reading in general, how our behavior is across the school and our school-wide behavior initiatives, and school climate, attendance, screening for risks, trying to troubleshoot issues that we see and also anticipate them so that we have a positive school culture and successful learning, basically. So, in excellent news, our behavior referrals are lower than ever in history this year. And there are a lot of speculations as to why that might be. Kids are really, really glad to be back, and they're just doing everything to just keep things good and happy, maybe. We are obviously not touching each other as much as usual because of COVID regulations. Maybe that has something to do with it. One teacher was speculating today that the masks prevent the non-verbal negative communication that you sometimes see that kind of starts negative interactions. So maybe that's a plus of wearing masks. We don't have a scientific answer, but we know that there have only been a couple of behavior referrals. And so for the middle of October, that's really great news. Just take it, yeah. Yes. As I mentioned, we'll be using a new benchmark assessment for math this year, so we're excited to see how that goes. I mentioned the early literacy and math assessments, smarter, balanced. We have found that getting the Acadians testing done for ELA has been a little bit more challenging, particularly because some of our students are virtual or online, and not all of them have been willing to come in for that test because of concerns around COVID. And so we are not set up to deliver that assessment online, and so we have missed a few of our students. But overall, our rate is still pretty good of students who have tested. Actually, it's quite excellent. And as for the results of the Acadians testing, they are down. We have fewer students who are at benchmark where we want them to be for reading, which is certainly what you would expect after being off of school for six months in a row. And that's consistent with the rest of the schools across the ISD. So this morning, we got to look at that data, and pretty much people are just, the students are much lower than we would want them to be. And so we've got our work cut out for us this year and really hope to stay in school as long as possible so we can get those reading interventions in and bring those kids back up to where they need to be. And as I mentioned, we're, we have experienced the hurdle of students with connectivity issues at home when we do have to go remote. We don't know if we'll have to go remote again. Some people think we're done with that, and some people think it's going to be on again, off again throughout the year. We can't predict. But a couple of things that we've done is, we actually, we've loaned out our Chromebooks. In this past school closure for two weeks, we had every machine that we own out and being used by a family. And really, some, some families were still stretched a little bit too thin, and they needed additional devices, like if there were siblings. And some just didn't get the word to us in time that they needed one, and so they didn't get one. Obviously, we were out at the time anyway. There's a world Chromebook shortage, so if you order a Chromebook, you won't get it till spring anyway. So that's a real issue, especially because we do have some grant funding available that could be used for those devices for remote learning. But there's nothing we can do about that or anybody else. But there's nothing we can do about that or anybody else, except we did manage to, um, to find out that Launce School was selling or was going to get rid of some older Chromebooks. So we took advantage of that and purchased some used Chromebooks from Launce. They just got theirs on a rotation, and they ordered theirs, I believe, several months back when the Chromebook shortage wasn't a thing. So we have 90 new machines that should be in circulation or in use by us by next week. And so we're really excited about that. In addition to that, we've got the internet issues. And so what we're looking at right now is a program where we can work with T-Mobile to enable hotspots that could be used throughout the area so that we would get them in place. We would purchase them. We would make sure they were working. And then if we are shut down again, then we'll just be able to drive those hotspots out to the locations that need them. And there are a few of our families who have, like, there's one family who doesn't have internet at all, and others need additional internet. And so we would be able to provide it that way. And that's a, that's a really good program that offers some free hotspot-type devices to schools. And if the T-Mobile coverage isn't good in some of the places that we need it, then there are other options that we would pay for, but we would be able and willing to do that for those families. Any questions on any of that?
Just really quickly, in a general sense, how old are the Launce computers that we purchased?
I think they're four years old, but it's not going to be a guarantee.
Okay, that's still fully acceptable in my mind.
Unfortunately, it's newer than most of ours. Yeah, we are, we're definitely beyond the life expectancy of our devices. I do also have an update from Tyler. Since he wasn't able to be here, I asked him to write up a paragraph. Should I go into that?
Sure.
Okay. So the audit is going to be completed this month, and the presentation will take place during the November board meeting. We expect to finish the 2019-20 fiscal year better than projected. And Tyler is not able to speak to specifics until, of course, we have the final audit report in hand. And now for some more good news in our current fiscal year. We didn't have to realize a cut in the foundation amount as was projected in June. You remember that we were expecting the biggest cut in funding in school history? And the legislators managed to work together, and that did not happen, thank goodness. So we will remain at $8,111 per student for 2021. In addition, we're receiving a one-time allowance of $65 per pupil. This is not an increase to the foundation amount, it's a one-time addition. We're also in the beginning stages of the budget amendment, and this should shed some positive light on our fund balance. We will keep you updated as we work through it. Now, looking forward to 21-22, the projections forecasted from the state shall decrease in revenues. It's not another sky-falling moment, however says, but just something to be mindful of as we look toward the future. And that's it. Thank you. Moving on, action, discussion items. We have a recommendation to adopt a resolution to continue to levy 100% of the school profit taxes in the summer. Do we have a motion? And I will make that motion. Do we have, okay, any discussion on this?
Um, I, yeah, just discussion. Is there any time when you would adopt? Would I be the school taxes in the summertime?
We've done it this way for years. The other option would be to do that in the winter, but that would cause a cash flow problem if we had a lot of money in our fund balance. And that would be something we'd consider, but it doesn't necessarily help us in any way. Any other discussion?
The other, I guess, question, do we do a separate resolution to, uh, give the township the, the authority to collect those taxes? Or is that included in this?
I think it's all-inclusive. I don't believe we have done that in the past. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on. We have a recommendation to approve the early completion of DB coursework of William Carlson after the first trimester. Do we have a motion to that? And I'll support that. Is there discussion?
Seems like a win all around. He's able to achieve because of what he did here.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. C, we have a recommendation to approve the early completion of DB coursework of Kit Erickson after the first trimester. Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. Steve, do you want to support?
Sure.
Okay. And do we have any discussion on this one? Same thing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstained? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to policy. D, we have a recommendation to adopt the new Title IX Regulations Policy 2266. Do we have a motion? If you'd like, I can go through some of the changes to the Title IX law, just for the benefit of anyone else present.
Sure.
So as I mentioned at the last meeting, Title IX has changed substantially at the federal level, and so all schools need to change their policies to adopt. The definition of sexual assault under Title IX has been narrowed. The new regulations limit the obligation to investigate complaints only to conduct that occurred in the school's program or activity, not unrelated off-campus conduct. It explains mandatory response obligations of schools, and we'll talk to that later, a change to the standard for school liability, more detailed grievance procedures that will alter the way schools process and respond to complaints. Hearings are optional with written requests required for K to 12 schools. Schools may choose what standard of evidence to use, a preponderance of evidence or clear and convincing. And our NEOLAs representatives have strongly recommended we go with the preponderance of evidence route. And schools must offer both parties an appeal from a determination regarding responsibility. So those are some of the few changes. And in addition, there is some hefty training that is involved with Title IX. And so the Title IX officers in our school will be Sarah Moylanin, Athletic Director, Jessie Kentala, Guidance Counselor, and myself. And so we'll be going through, I believe, around five hours of training. And then in addition, everybody in the school also has training to make sure they know when they need to report something. So this, um, this policy that you have here in your packet that you also got last month is what comes to us through NEOLA, our policy people, and this is what John Varra has recommended that we adopt. Thank you. Do you want to stop with me in the motion?
I don't think we could.
I'll make the motion for Jeff. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Number two on the policy, we have a recommendation to update COVID-19 war resolutions from the Siren Law Firm. Do we have a motion for that? I can make the motion. Your support? Okay, do we have discussion on this?
Yeah. Um, if I may.
Sure.
Is this resolution really necessary anymore?
It's recommended by Trune because of the COVID regulations still in place. So if we're doing things that are not normal according to our regular policies, like, like attendance is different, and all kinds of things are different, and if that has to happen because, like, the health department shuts us down, shuts us, shuts us down, or whatever it may be, then we don't have to meet as a board to make sure that we can do that. We could, we could keep the other one in place. We could, we could do this, or we could, I think, have liability and, um, and people having issue with it if we're not following the policies that we have in place because of COVID requiring different things.
Well, I guess for one, the other, or the first one, I believe, isn't that no, um, no longer in existence because of the orders being overturned?
Because the, because it's based upon the executive order 2020-35.
Right.
As long as that's in place, yeah, so something like that.
Right, right. So, um, I mean, I guess my question is, uh, how is this differ from in the past? You know, there's been school closures without the board voting on it based on, um, signals in the school and other things that come up, you know, whether it's some emergency with the building or so on. I, I don't feel that we have to, that our policies restrict us so much that that can't just be the case without having this extra layer of, um, of, uh, the resolution on top of that.
I don't know. I don't, I think that the idea is that I, that we don't know everything that would come up. And so the lawyers recommend putting this in place so that we have the flexibility to respond without having to have a board meeting every time that happened. That's my understanding. I didn't mean to cut you out.
No, you didn't. So it's more or less to cover us if you something.
That's my understanding.
It definitely happened.
Right.
Put your eye on the caution.
That's my understanding. We could discuss and table it till the next month if you prefer.
Yeah, we, if you want to table it, we can.
Well, I, I mean, I guess the other thing would be when is it no longer necessary? And how does that, um, how do, how do we, you know, uh, rescind it then afterwards?
I think the idea of this one is that it's no longer necessary when the pandemic and all the changes that we have to do as a result of it is basically over. Or we have policies that, um, that are adopted within our NEOLA policy binder that would regulate what we need to do COVID-wise. That's my understanding. That's the point, is we don't know, and that's what the lawyer wrote to me when, um, when I asked him about whether we should update that policy. He said there's just so much even in the spring that we didn't know about, that now they're able to hone what they needed to put in that policy. But, I mean, I think it's just still a lot of unknowns, and that's the issue. So is there any more discussion on it? On the table, is, uh, ahead? Okay, so then I think I, 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 you, so.
I would think I did, yeah.
Okay. Moving back, and so, okay, no more discussion then, all. And then moving on to E, we have a recommendation to discuss and decide on an increased rate paid for substitute teachers and discuss and decide on posting for a building sub. So that'd be a new staff position. So I guess we do one at a time here.
I've got something to share with you here. Yeah, I think we're just, it's, it's a discussion, and I, I hope a decision will be made on sub pay. And if you wanted to just discuss and decide on building subs or something, you could do as well.
Oh, first issue then is the increased rate of pay for substitute teachers. Currently, the other local schools are paying more than Dollar Bay is per day for subs. It used to be the case that most of the local schools were around the same amount, with a couple a little bit higher. And Launce and Durden were always higher because it was harder for them to get subs, because they're a little bit further removed, obviously. This year, one of the local schools raised their rate by $25 a day, which was quite a leap. And when that happened, uh, subs, uh, tended to refuse jobs for schools that were paying the previous lower rate and to, um, wanted to take the jobs at the higher-paying school. And then schools, as the others followed suit, of course, because that is what we needed to be able to continue to get subs. We've had a sub shortage in our area for years, and COVID-19 has not made that better, it's made that worse. Some of our retired substitute teachers are not willing to come into the building because they're older and have more concerns about health and safety. A lot of other people have not continued. And then, um, obviously, our school, being the last to raise the rate if you do decide to do that, doesn't help us with subs. Our teachers have been relied upon quite a bit to use their prep periods to sub for one another as needed. We're very concerned about a time when a lot of teachers in the area may be quarantined, whether they have COVID or are just quarantined because of close contact. If we have even a handful of schools with a handful of teachers each out for quarantine, that's, that may be what shuts down schools more than anything else this year. So we have schools paying anywhere from $95, which was decided at a local school at their last board meeting last week, all the way up to $120 a day, and actually, $125 at that same school for retired teachers. So I recommend that you discuss what would be an appropriate rate of pay for Dollar Bay subs, looking at the comparisons there.
What do we pay now?
$80 a day. That was what, um, a few of the local districts, I think four of us were paying until very recently.
I would say we would want to be the same as our nearest neighbors.
Geography often plays into a sub's decision whether to say yes or no to the opportunity.
Yeah.
In a general sense, we're about a month and a half into the school year. How frequently do we need a sub this year as a, as a, in a ballpark way?
It's really hard to say. It's really hard to say because it's just an, it depends, answer. At the beginning of the year, we have that ACADiNS testing, and so we need a sub for every one of those teachers. Sometimes we need subs just part of the day, like for athletics, for our coaches, who are out in just the afternoon. And so that might be covered by a half-day sub or might be covered by a teacher in-house. It's, it's very hard to say. You know, quarantine brings up another issue, and then it's one person who's out for an extended period of time without any day breaks in between. So it's a lot of days that we anticipate we're going to be all this year, and we need somebody this year. So at, I'm thinking at least 100, I'm thinking. Or match, chassel 105. What do you guys think?
Well, I'm hitting probably 110.
Yeah, I think we need to, uh, our hand is played, I think. We, we, we have to stay on par with our fellow school districts, or
I was looking at the other.
We'll be, we'll be challenged.
Smaller districts are, what, 95 and 100, chassel 105. But we can go up with the, I guess, you know, that's probably why they are teaching, I know. My daughter subs do.
I see Stanton's trying to do a $1 better there, huh?
Yeah, they're deciding that tonight.
111.
That's exactly right, Jeff. Think they're making a favor.
Well, we gotta go 111 on one.
111 and lunch.
We actually already do offer lunch, so that's actually should be decided, and we should include that in the motion. If you do make a motion, whether we continue to provide the lunch for them.
The other schools also provide the lunch just a while.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, it's a kind of universal thing?
It has become. We started it, they followed, and it was decided back to.
And I think that's, that's a good plan, too. So I mean, it's a matter of.
And, and the $100 a day, and an eight-hour day, that's only about $13 dollars an hour.
Do the 110?
I'd like the 111. Why not? $1 better.
And it's, uh, I'll, I'll make, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we increase daily substitute teacher pay to $111.
And it includes the lunch.
And it, with, with, in, a complimentary lunch from our cafeteria included.
Okay. I'll support. That's a good plan. And no more discussion on this? All in favor?
We can't create any possibility where we have another headache of having to compete for subs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. You're abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, because you're, you're, thank you, Jeff.
And Jen abstained, yes. Okay. So we have, we have to discuss on posting for building subs. Yeah. Yeah, I'll speak a little bit about that. Something that at least one other local district, maybe two, has done, and that I have experienced at schools where I have been a teacher, is a building sub. And that's a person who is in the building every day and would be the first go-to. You end up with a really great sub. You end up with a, a really great sub because then that person ends up knowing all the students in the school and some of the routines of the teachers and just all the ins and outs. It ends up, um, just being a really smooth and a positive thing and somebody else to develop good relationships with the kids and everything. The issue would, would be that that person wouldn't necessarily have a subbing position every day, um, kind of along lines of what Dave was asking because it's not every day that we need a sub, although we do have a lot of days where we need someone just for a chunk of the day and this would really help with that. And what I would suggest, and after I've talked with Tyler about this, we came to this and we also asked Jennifer for some thoughts and advice on this the other day, too, would be that that person might be a COVID compliance officer managing, um, the submissions of the screeners, managing, um, the masks, the sanitizer, all those types of things. That's just kind of getting spread among different people and, um, not from one organized point. We would be able to use CARES Act funding for that position because it is a problem that has been caused that we anticipate to be worsened quite a bit by COVID. Like I said, as we have people quarantining, so it's going to have a real problem and that may be what shuts down our building. In fact, one of the local schools was not sure they would be able to open up following the two week closure based on teachers who had been quarantined. So it's already a reality for some of us. So that's why I wanted to discuss that. Uh, we could, um, we could table it. You could throw your thoughts out. I, I don't, I don't necessarily have the right answer. I'm just saying it's something that is an opportunity that might be out there that we could look at.
I mean, that's basically all these questions, funding is helping here or something like that. You're saying it can be covered by the?
It could, but that means that we have fewer of those funds. And I don't have the numbers with me right now. We would have fewer of those funds for, um, when Chromebooks become available again in the world, for example, buying those if we find that we need them. If we're shut down for a longer period in the spring, well, we no longer need that building sub, which is actually something that would be true. We wouldn't continue to pay them if we were closed anyway. And we would make sure that was very clear. But we wouldn't have that money then that we'd already spent to, to buy more devices if needed. We're doing really well with masks and that type of supplies. We've gotten some additional grant funding, as I mentioned, from the Kiwanah Foundation, from Portage Health Foundation. We're very grateful for those monies. Um, and the CARES Act is a little bit different.
And how would this person be treated, um, benefit wise or whatever you want to call it? I mean, what would actually be a part-time position? How would you classify it?
I believe it would be just another support staff position if we went this way. And, um, it would be a support staff position, um, likely at a higher rate than many of our support staff people at this point because there is a requirement for education for a substitute teacher. You need 60 successful college credits in Michigan to be a sub. And that's not a requirement for any of our support staff positions.
So that should justify some kind of a job description or something, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
And, uh, determine rate of pay based on that?
Right. I mean, and it would be, I think, I mean, I think it's obvious that it would minimally be 111 days a day. It might be 111 a day because it's a good rate, as you yourselves know. That's why you went with 111. Um, and it would be a dependable position for that person. Again, obviously they wouldn't, they wouldn't expect to work if we were closed.
Um, it may be something that the teachers even ask to take a look at, too, to make sure that it doesn't go against their party.
It would not conflict with theirs, but we could give it some more time and think about it if you want to.
Yeah, they should know anyways.
Yes, absolutely.
They should always get together and make a look at it as well.
It's not a exact, um, cycle.
I was just gonna say that I'm in total agreement that we, this certainly isn't a easy decision that can be made. We, we definitely need to, uh, have more input from more angles and make sure we're doing right by our budget and by our current staff.
Are you thinking just for this year?
Yes. I mean, and we would be able to read up next year if we're still in this kind of a COVID situation.
Not a dire need for more.
Right.
I don't know. Everything's uncertain, but we can table it till next.
What difficulty do you think it would be to find somebody for that?
I, I don't know. Because there is that education requirement, it's a bit of a toss-up. If that wasn't there, I think we would have a lot of applicants. I do think that there are some people in the area, um, who would be really interested who do have that met.
I don't think we need to add anything on this other new table, right?
Correct.
Does anybody have any more questions about it first, or the woman think about it? So then we'll move on to F. We have a recommendation to discuss use of school facilities by outside groups in the coming months.
Okay, so in the past, we have freely shared our facility, um, with people from outside. If we had people asking to use our gym, for example, and they were from an organization in town, we would ask them to, um, pay some kind of a stipend for the use of that facility because it does cost us for electricity and the custodial costs associated. When we've had people from our families ask, like for example, we want to have a New Year's party and use the gym with our extended family, we have been okay with that because for dollar bay, we want to share and we believe it's everybody's resource. Things are different now. We have obviously a lot of strict requirements. We, um, are asking people to stay outside of the building, even parents as much as possible. And Danielle and Rachel, the secretaries, will run and help them do their business right outside the door so they don't have to come in, do the screening process and, um, and everything. So, um, I was asked by somebody earlier this year if they could maybe use our facility for, for something. It was just an individual who kind of wanted a favor. It was going to require quite a bit of disinfection afterward and I, you know, they don't know how to do that. So I gave them the no answer on that. Um, recently it came up again and this was from one of our employees who was wondering if they could use the facility for, um, an outside group that, that they wanted to have here. Now that person might, you know, obviously know how to do the disinfecting procedures that we do. So is that different or does the board want to make a statement on how or whether we share our facility this year with COVID regs in place?
Where I work, I have one of Hancock's most popular community centers right underneath my office and we have a blanket no public events policy because it's simply too hard to say yes to one and potentially have to say no to another. Uh, the confusion and the headache was just too.
Exactly.
Too much. It would, it would, it would have been difficult to navigate. And, um, my opinion is that we just simply shouldn't do it. Uh, there's, there's no way to have a policy that covers every what-if. As unfortunate as that is, because we are the community school, but we also have to do right by the folks who are in here every day. And, uh, we don't want to bring something in that we're working hard to keep over.
And I agree. Okay. For now.
I feel like, uh, maybe it's better to not, to not ask, but what about, um, use the gym facilities for, um, uh, our teams when it's not necessarily a scheduled practice?
Open gyms?
Yeah.
I feel like we would continue with that because it is a school-based activity.
Yeah, they're not a third party for an outside group.
Students and.
And staff need to be there all the time for those. Good question.
I don't think we would.
I don't think we would vote. I just wanted to hear what you had to say.
I, I don't think it'd be the right move right now.
For now, right? So G, we have a recommendation to discuss whether to hold the annual Halloween parade.
So for Halloween, what we decided for in-house is that classroom teachers will keep their students within their own classroom walls and they'll do their own socially distanced, COVID-friendly celebrations and, um, and those can help in, I mean, can happen in a self-contained way. There won't be any moving between classes. Um, the question is about our annual Halloween parade. Um, I, I know some of the other local schools are doing something like this. It's a tradition in our community. It's a great one. It's been suggested that the fire truck could lead us again, a marching band could follow if they wanted, but the students would obviously not be able to ride up in the cab with the firemen this year. Um, it's, it's outside and that's, um, the least risky of environments for COVID with kids. So there's that going for us. The only issue I can think of is that it does bring quite an audience of people lining the streets. And so the board may be concerned about feedback from the community if people on the sides of the streets, um, end up not being as responsible as we would like. We wouldn't be able to do anything. I don't believe we'd be able to do anything toward policing or monitoring that. For us, it would just be about making sure that the kids were in their classroom groups and, and moving along as usual.
I think we go for it. I think, I think it's like a recess almost. I mean, we know different than that, but maybe just however we advertise it, request or ask the people that are going to be watching it to follow proper social distancing and those types of things, you know?
I slipped out of work last year to catch it and that social distancing wouldn't have been a problem last year even. It was, uh, a moderate crowd.
Okay.
We don't have to motion.
I don't think so. I think it's fine just to move forward.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the older new business and there's something Jeff Stevens, our board treasurer, is going to read and say.
We've got a letter here. To the DBTC community, constituents, and all other interested parties. While we as a board have felt it ethical to keep individuals' financial details out of public discussion, we continue to hear and receive queries and accusations regarding our decision to offer administrative assistant Karen Ham a retirement incentive package, an offer she accepted during our August 2020 meeting. First and foremost, it must be made abundantly clear that the decision to offer, sorry. First and foremost, it must be made abundantly clear that the decision to offer a retirement incentive was 100% budget-driven. We were in no way dissatisfied with Karen's performance on the job. There are plenty of reasons why she's a favorite among students and parents alike. She's a friend to all of us as well. This was strictly financial and while we didn't enjoy even having to consider it, we recognize in order to keep our district solvent, especially when all financial decisions are shrouded in, in the uncertainty of COVID, it's an offer that had to be extended. The role of the administrative assistant is key to district operations. The budget impact of the position prior to August 2020 needed addressing. Regardless of whether Karen would have opted to remain on staff or choose retirement, we determined that it was budget necessary to adjust the weekly and annual hours for the position, again strictly with the district's overall financial situation in mind. Though the timing surely led some to believe otherwise, this judgment, this adjustment was not made to sway Karen's decision. It was made to help us ensure the district could achieve much-needed budget relief. Please remember there were threats that the state government would slash the per-student allocation by hundreds, if not thousands of dollars. With regard to the specific action many are questioning, these are the numbers that led us to our decision. For the 2019-20 academic year, Karen's salary was $47,091. Including FICA contributions as well as the amount contributed annually to her retirement plan, that total rises to $63,879.21. Additionally, the amount the district paid toward insurance, vacation, personal time, and other annual benefits totaled $23,101.5. In total, the district spent $86,980.26 last year for the administrative assistant position. By comparison, the new hire has a salary of $21,262.50, a rate of pay on par with that of other administrative assistants early in their careers. With FICA and retirement added, the cost for this employee increases to $28,842.58 per year. Additionally, the insurance, vacation, personal time, and other annual benefits cost the district $9,952.98. The total cost for the administrative assistant position this fiscal year is $38,795.56. The district felt it appropriate and budget manageable to offer retirement incentive of $25,320, an amount exceeding that offer to veteran teachers when budget relief is sought. Therefore, including the incentive, the savings realized by this offer being made an accepted amount to $22,864.70 for the current school year. For the next three years, the realized savings will exceed $42,000 each year, resulting in accumulative savings for the district over that four-year period of $157,173.79. Again, this decision was entirely driven by the budget realities we face and we continue to face in the years ahead. We would have had even greater challenges to balance our budget, but the district realized additional budget relief from the resignation this spring of elementary teacher Kristen Carriana, who after more than 20 years with the district, accepted a position with the Copper Country ISD. Mrs. K was not replaced on the staff. The timing of her decision actually prevented the district from having to consider layoffs. While we remain uneasy about the sharing specifics like these in a public setting, we're doing so in response to increasing chorus of questioners who have made it clear we need to share this information. We hope this eliminates any uncertainty and alleviates the public's concern with regard to this recent action. Thank you.
I hope if there's any other new, or business, anybody? All right, is there, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I just have one really quick question. I know we had posted for a JV girls' basketball coach. Uh, is there any update you can share regarding that process? I know the season is coming up quickly.
We have one applicant who we're looking to schedule for an interview and we have somebody who, um, has said that they might be interested. And we are hoping that we can figure this out very soon.
It's the parent of a JV basketball player. Thank you.
All right, do we have motion to adjourn?
I'm making the motion.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.